...stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Maybe you see it, we'll go ahead and have a little call, start calling me.
Horns, Rorland, here, Pasing.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
Bissel.
Here.
Horn.
Here. Uh, and a, uh, approval of agenda, if it's alright, I'd like to move out of their new business, the ordinance, uh, for water tap ordinance, I'd like to go ahead and move that up and put it in the water and sewer department section, that's all the change I have. Uh, I entertain a motion second to approve that, agenda change.
May you.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Second, thank you. I'll ask for any discussion on that, I'll ask for roll call.
Horns.
Yes.
Rorland, yes, Pasing.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Bissel.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Brings us to the, uh, approval of the monthly minutes and financial statements.
I'm looking for approval, second.
Motion for approval, second, any, have that, fill it, I hand that, sorry. Uh, any discussion, I'll ask for roll call.
Horns.
Yes.
Rorland, yes, Pasing.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Bissel.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Uh, brings us to department head reports, we'll start out with the airport commission, Alex Kinnon.
Thank you, this will be brief, because it's mostly about things in the work, but there is one bit of really good news that I'm happy to share. Briefly, we're, we're working on the grant and getting everything worked out with Sarver, uh, Sarver Engineering on our 10-year master plan. And, that seems to be going in the right direction as it should. We have applied for a 90-10 grant to move the fuel farm from down the other end of the airport up to near the terminal here. Uh, speaking personally, one of the things I've decided about there, we're currently using an underground tank down there, which, if, we're not having any problems with it, it's a wonderful tank, it's working just great, but, uh, we have to be concerned about the future, we have to be concerned about growth of the airport. So, we're working on that grant and get all that approved, well, obviously, we're gonna hit with fire department, with the fire chief, and get the appropriate approvals, we're not just gonna drop a fuel tank where we can't get our pay. You know, without the fire chief. Um, a report came out this week, a study of area airports. And this is a class, uh, I, I hope I've got this right, because I don't, don't have my notes, it's a class five airport. Obviously, there's bigger airports in the state, obviously, there's smaller airports in the state, but we're, we're in a very popular class of airport. Of the airports in this class in the state, we are the most economically impactful of all the other airports, we've contributed this to these two businesses we have running down here, and which, of course, both are doing international trade, and, uh, I'll add, add into the tax revenue around here. So, we're very proud about that, and I wanted to share that with you this evening.
Deal.
Are there any questions?
No, that 90-10 is 90 federal, and the other stay, it's always basically 100% on the grant.
Yeah, uh, well, and, and we get, of course, we get a few bucks in there that, that we'll put towards it, but, uh, yeah, certainly, it's 90% federal. And it's been tentatively approved, what we did, we said, okay, we wanna get on the, on the budget, uh, uh, schedule for that, so, we just kinda said, okay, we're moving the fuel tanks, we think it's gonna cost this much, we might be changing that figure going forward. And, and they're forward. And by the way, uh, part of moving that tank is to support additional business growth for our airport.
Good deal. Anything else for Alex? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Brings us to other control, I talked to Tim and Lori today, Tim from the county, had nine calls within the city last month, picked up two dogs and five cats. Uh, Lori, uh, said it's going pretty good at the snip, has a total of 57 animals right now, 38 dogs, 19 cats, had three adoptions of dogs last month, and seven cats adopted, 12 dogs were sent to rescue, uh, that's all I had for that. I don't know what the next event they have, but someone has stabilized that, uh, snip with a donation for the rest of the year. Always will still take donations, dog food, et cetera, but, uh, looking better out there. Brings us to fire department, uh, Chief Webb.
I apologize for my attire, I just don't know how many shirts this will fit an arm through. Been kinda busy this month, uh, we had a transformer blow downtown, which took out a lot of everybody in downtown. Uh, we had another, during the storm, one of the storms, a limb down the street after lightning strike, cut a power line, they thought the house was going on fire, but it wasn't, but it did create a problem. Uh, just this last weekend with the storms, we, there was three wrecks within 35 minutes, attributed that to the water going across the road, just bad drainage problems right now with the construction going on. Uh, had a gas leak over in Honey Hills, a gentleman hit a line that, with his lawnmower that probably should've been marked better, uh, which kinda brings me to the question, we used to have, when Arcqua was here, we had somebody here, uh, Don Hesley worked there for years and was here stationed. A problem we're running into with CenterPoint is they changed their way of doing things. If there's a call, we called 911, have them get CenterPoint on the way, they send somebody up here, generally, they're out of Conway or Cersei or somewhere, he's not allowed to, or they are not allowed to do anything, they have to assess the problem first. Then they call a crew, and then the crew may be coming from Cersei, or, one time, it was from Jonesboro. So, just like the little gas leak we had over here, when we was out of a one-inch line, uh, it took Arcqua from CenterPoint, should I say, two and a half hours to get here, that was for the crew to get here to fix the line. So, I don't know if there's anything we can do, maybe talk to CenterPoint about stationing somebody if they're closer, or...
Do you have that Kendall's number from Heber? Cause he's, uh, I've got a number, but when that happens, it hits something, like, it's kinda like the old Don Hesley number, so, I'll, I'll get that to you, but I, I'll, I'll call him from the city side and say, look, we gotta have somebody quick.
It'd be nice, but I...
I think this guy, but I'll, I'll make sure you get that number, make sure he's...
They're under new management, they're under new management, he, he came...
How long ago, what, okay?
It's, it's been a couple, two, three weeks ago, I talked to him.
I withdraw everything I've said.
So, they're under different management.
Okay.
Um, we've been doing driver training class, hopefully, we get that done in the next couple of weeks, uh, everything seems to be going pretty good right now. Uh, I do have one more question that, I didn't know anything about it until I looked on Facebook, um, I've had some people concern, and I, I'm kinda concerned, uh, 911 had it on Facebook page about, uh, using a company or one of those helicopters. Everything that there's three helicopters that they can use, if there's a problem, that's any helicopter in for, most of us have made, uh, what am I gonna make?
Air.
Airyvac.
Air.
Airyvac.
Airyvac.
Airyvac. Now, they're saying that it depends on who's closer, that they're gonna call whoever come in. Well, my, this was kinda brought up about a year ago, and at that time, they said that whatever company they brought in, that if you had a membership with Airyvac, they would work for these others also. Well, the last Facebook post I seen from 911, I hadn't had a chance, I'd seen it today, was that you will basically need to buy another membership with this new helicopter company. And that kinda is concerning, because I, I haven't been involved in anything that I know of, nobody said anything about this happening, so that we have a better idea. I would have a better idea what to tell people, so, I'm just kinda throwing that out there for y'all to do a little research on and see what you think, you may know, I don't know.
I know, but I'll find out.
Other than that, I have nothing else, if there's any questions I can answer, I'll hear you back on that.
Thank you, chief, and hoping your arm gets better quicker. Uh, brings us to parks, uh, department, Parks and Rec, Charles Wilson.
I don't have a whole lot, I've gotten a lot of comments about the park, but, um, the crew I've got over there now, I mean, they're like, this is a nice park, so, that's always encouraging to hear the people that's working there, they take pride in what they're doing, so...
It looks good.
And it's nice, it looks good, we've got Archie Fest going, uh, should be a pretty good weekend, uh, Ms. Corning, she's got some changes I gotta get with her, she sent me a couple of texts to make her corner more appealing to everybody, gave me a fish, give her some ideas, so, after everything kinda slows down, I'll get with her, and we're gonna make a few changes and see if we can make that just a little bit more appealing to the public and kinda strengthen it up a little bit, help her. Uh, we've got a new softball director, and I'm pretty confident we're gonna get everything back on, try to get our teams back on our fields and get them playing ball again, but kinda fell behind, and we had a lot of people quit, and a lot of people disinterested in playing, and I think with this new director, I think we can get everybody back, and we're not driving behind for them to play the ball.
Who's the director?
Jamie Reeves. Did I get him in the minutes last meeting, I thought I got him. Okay, yep, good.
Other than that, just been plugging at this Archie Fest, we're gonna have a big weekend, uh, everybody's gonna have comp time, so, I'm gonna work on as much as I can and as long as I can, with that'll have a fit, and give them Friday off after the fourth, so...
That'll be good. Yeah, y'all always do a good job with that, with the traffic and everything else, I appreciate it. Anything else for Charles, hold on. Thank you. Brings us to Chief John Willby, police department report.
We, we've had a pretty busy month and everything, and I didn't have a list of different things that we done, I'll just go over a few of them. Uh, we've made several drug arrests, and, uh, I think we've made seven or eight arrests on drugs alone, we've had a couple of cars stolen, we've got them back, uh, Jai's working on a case right now on a stolen vehicle, uh, and, uh, we wrote several citations this month and everything. We've had, uh, little issues with, uh, one of our trucks, transfer case went out on it, we had to have it fixed, uh, and that cost us $2,163.14 to get this transfer case redone. Uh, it's a brand-new, uh, case, but, um, my dilemma is, I only had a thousand and something dollars in our, uh, vehicle maintenance left over, so, I'm gonna have to ask if we can move some money from the vehicle purchase, we've got, I think I'm reading this right, we've got $4,347.74 left in that, and I was gonna ask the council if we could move that over to our vehicle maintenance fund, where we can pay to have, pay for this, uh, transfer case.
Okay, uh, the vehicle purchase, the 33, whatever the amount was, you wanna remove all of that?
Yes, if I can.
What was that amount? 3347?
Uh, it's, uh, 4347, if I'm reading that right, is that right then?
4347. Okay.
And, uh, if we could move it over, that would give us a total of 538718, if my calculation's right, and then after we pay the $2,163.14, we'll have $3,284.04. And we had a, a car went down on us, it was kinda like a bad deal, uh, it threw a timing belt, so, when it threw the timing belt, it messed up a couple of valves in the, the vehicle also. Uh, if we replace the motor, it's gonna cost $3,500, I, I can say that, but, uh, I don't see putting that money back into that 2010 charter, uh, I just told them to put the motor back together, it will run, but, uh, we're just gonna have to end up just selling it, it, it won't be, it, it can't be out there on the fleet.
You have another car to drive?
Uh...
Is there another car waiting?
Yes, sir, but we had an extra one, so, we put Eric in that one.
Okay, you wanna, you need a motion, a second, to move the money from vehicle purchase...
Yeah.
Uh, over to vehicle maintenance?
Vehicle maintenance, yes.
Okay, okay, I'll entertain a motion, second, to do that.
I'll make a motion, move.
I'll second.
Motion, second, any discussion?
How many cars do you have right now?
Hmm, seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
With the one...
Eight, counting on the one that we're gonna sell.
How many employees?
How many employees?
There's seven of us. So, we're kinda, yeah, anybody that comes and works, you know, part-time or something, uh, we've got a couple of cars that are there, but they can't take home, cause they live out in the county, or live out way off, so, we got an extra car there in case...
Was this one of your part-time cars, or was one you use in all-time?
It was a full-time car that was used, so, we got the part-time car, got it.
What about the, the one you got from the county, is it up and running?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know, I hadn't noticed it.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not strapped or anything.
I knew, I do, I didn't think it was, I just didn't know who was driving it, or what it was.
Jay drives it.
The, uh, you know, the concern I got a little bit is, six months of ma, you know, the maintenance, hopefully, that'll get through it, but what happens with any new vehicle purchased coming up, or, and it seems like when we bought that, and we had to move money to buy that car, but, you know, I, I, I just write, I'd, I'd have to go back and look, I was trying to figure...
No, we didn't have to move any money to buy the car, we just bought it from the sheriff's office.
That's what I was saying, I, I couldn't, I, it seemed like there was something, and I was trying to back up, but...
Yeah, we bought that, uh, one that Jay's driving.
Yeah, I knew, I knew it come from sheriff's office. Thirty-two hundred and change on your maintenance from here on out, so...
Yeah, yeah, so, that's, you know, we are, we started out with 3,500, so, I've been trying to limp it all the way through, you know, it's, it's hard to maintain seven, eight vehicles with 3,500 dollars, so...
There, there again, what's the oldest car again, I think we got its answer...
2010.
You know, so, it's, it's pushing its 10-year limit, and that's probably more than enough, I would say.
On a, on a police vehicle, I'd say four and a half years from now is getting out of, you know, cause they're, they're running all the time, so...
Yeah, I've noticed that at times.
Yeah, so, we just, uh...
Okay.
Twenty minutes.
Last for roll call.
Horns.
Yes.
Rorland.
Yes.
Pasing.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Bissel.
Yes.
Horn.
Yeah.
Thank you. And that's really all I've got, guys.
He's gotta have that one taken off of inventory if he wants to get rid of it.
Yeah, when he gets rid of the car, we'll have to remove it from the...
Yeah, we'll, we'll remove it.
But, you putting it for auction or something?
You have to do it before you have to sell it.
Get that right there.
I mean, you put like a seal bit in the paper... You have to have removed it, if you're gonna sell it or whatever, we'll have to, at the next meeting, just say, I wanna remove this, I assume that's the process.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll cover it at the next meeting if we want to, we've got time to figure out how we're gonna do this.
Uh, okay, anything else for Chief Willby? Thank you. Brings us back to Charles Wilson, street department.
Uh, everything's going good, we're a little bit behind on our street mulling, which, like I said, we've been kinda wrestling this Archie Fest hanging around. And, I mean, some of, we've got called up, but some of, we're getting behind this rate and kinda making a crash grill, pretty fast.
Yeah.
And, uh, we're, our brush thing is kinda, kinda on hold right now, until we get a few thousand, uh, I mean, I've been working, trying to get this issue resolved, and as soon as we get it resolved, uh, we'll get back to our brush, and the public will just be patient with us, and not cut any more than they have to for a while, until we get everything took care of with the guns.
Also, and the phone company talked about, we had talked about putting another tile over there for, y'all did a really good job when it flash flood from the phone company, saved a lot of grief, but I told Randy, and then we'd, we'd throw in there the tile, where do you think?
What we do is the pavement, we've got some streets in mind, we've just gotta get everything ordered before we bed them out.
I gotta call them, Stryp and Honey Hill, the, the little stripe over Tom Flynn Hill, so...
Yeah, everybody's gonna be shoving which side of the road you're driving on, yeah.
Uh, that's all I got on streets, anything else?
I have something in, in Honey Hills, I've got a call on it the other day, um, it's probably about Mr. Ward's house, it's, um, between Frank McMurray, it's, uh, kind of, uh, it's just washed out, and it's pavement, and I think it would probably hurt a car really bad, cause it, it's, it's very, very tight, and it's deep.
Frank McMurray.
Yeah, it's kind of memory lane.
It's, it's right, close to John, the bridges.
Yeah.
The next door neighbor, up on that street, we'll go look at, it's that ditch with the pond out there in the woods, it's...
It's, it's kinda like, it's just, it's, it looks like it could just fall in at any minute, yeah, it's kinda, it's a little bit dangerous, yeah.
Six dollars, bottom part.
There's several issues there, that the state didn't really address correctly, need to be fixed.
Yeah, it's...
I was gonna see if I could meet with Richard for the next few days.
That ditch a little wider will help, like we talked about, the landowners, and put it further out, and that, that would help, gives it kind of a shoulder. Uh, okay, thank you, Charles, brings us down to water department, Will Hinch.
All right, um, I know we're meeting late, so, I just wanna go ahead and tell you, this is from, uh, April 17th to May 15th, building cycle, uh, water loss was, in Clinton, was, uh, 41%, the burnt ridge was 47, and the Denard was 35. The Denard and the burnt ridge has steadily come down, so, I know it's still real high, but it is coming down. I think we're about 65%, you know, in February, when I come on, so, we're on the burnt ridge, so, we're, we are coming down on it. Uh, chemical cost of the water in the plant, staying river, it's about 90 cents a thousand was costing us treated and chemicals. Uh, and then, uh, update on a couple of, uh, projects going on, the 16-inch line that's going out 95, that's gonna connect it on the, connect it all the way to the million gallon tank, uh, we've got it, I mean, all the pipes in, they actually, they filled it full of water today, they have been putting the HDH through it as they put it in, so, they're, they're cleaning the pipes and everything before they can get it put in service, it's gotta be tested before it goes in, but we do have it pressurized now, so, they did that today, so, that line's in, uh, and then that'll move us on to, um, putting in a couple of, uh, other deals where we can make the pole yard work, you know, so, that's, we're at the first stage, just about completed on it. Uh, 9th, or, 65 North, uh, they started putting the water line in, actually, they started putting the water line in Friday, but we held them up, those contractors helped us do a 400-foot reroute around the antique mall at Buckingham, cause it blowed up underneath the mall, uh, so, we did an emergency reroute, had it in our system out of water, but we got it done in about 10 hours, so, but the contractors, they, they brought us pipe, helped us do some digging, we, all we had to do is replace the pipe, and we're gonna have to, you know, pay them for the, the digging they did, but we had two of our pieces of equipment digging and their piece, so, that's the only that we got it done that fast, so, I was appreciative of them. Uh, but those, those are the two main projects we got going on, and everything's looking pretty good. Now, as far as the north project, uh, the report I got on our leaks is 17 leaks for that, uh, pay period, but we're doing that in a two-week time right now, was, I mean, we're averaging about two leaks a day north, if they're hitting our lines and stuff, just finding them for us, but that's part of it, I mean, they're, we, we didn't get a chance to go in and remove our line lines before the construction started, they're doing it all at one time, so...
What is, uh, how big was the line under the antique warehouse?
It's four inch.
Four oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, what we have there now is, when we dug down, we have a, we have to say a 6-inch tee or bore coming through there, we went ahead and put a new valve, so actually, we can shut off the water that goes out to, or out 65 towards Denard, and we can shut off the 110 side, all in one central location, so, it, it helps, well, we had a, we've been draining the tank every time we had a leak, cause you can't get shut down fast enough, when they hit a 6-inch main, by the time we get it shut down, the tank at Denard's empty. Today, they called us, within 15 minutes, we had it shut down and still had 20 feet in that 40-foot tank, so, even that one little project helped, so...
That's good.
Are they replacing all the ladder, just one of some of the roads?
They're only gonna be doing what's in the state highway right away. Uh, now, one question, one concern that I had on that is, I know we didn't have the money to, to move that line, and that's why the highway department stepped in and did it, but the highway department's actually taking our line off of a private easement, and it's now gonna be put back in the highway right away. The only problem with that is, if they do another water line, if, if they do another highway widening, it's on, it, normally, circumstances, it would've been on us. Uh, I do know that there is a clause in there to, uh, it had actually been brought up, we go ahead and keep our status the way it was before, so, I'm asking about that. Uh, Lloyd, which is an engineer, we're grabbing, he's a little proud of the road line, he is helping me on that, we're trying to get clarification, I have a meeting with the highway department next week to try to figure out, you know, if it ever has to be moved again, hopefully it won't, is it gonna be on us, or since it was on a private easement, if they'll honor our private easement from before, so, that's a question we got.
There's quite a bit of line in that, pretty good chunk?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
What do you think on that, Chad?
I don't like it.
I don't like it at all, but this, I mean, it's something in a meeting, I, you know, like I said, we're taking you out, and we knew it was coming out of a private, we had a private easement.
What is the reason for that?
Well, the highway department's done all the widening and everything, they've done everything, we, we didn't, out of the way I understand it, we didn't have the money to go through there and get those new easements, so, we didn't have the money to move it, so...
Explanatory.
The highway department come in there, took us over, and, but, now, they have taken our private right of way, which we had an easement for, and they putting it on state right away.
And it's a pretty substantial distance?
It's just pretty much from town to 110, so, yes.
Yeah, that's pretty good, okay.
Yeah, we just went through, we just went through that.
Yeah, we, we would sure like...
Yeah, Lloyd is helping me, Lloyd said he'd put a clause in there that they would, uh, they would actually honor our previous easements, but...
We need that in there.
It's gotta be put in writing, and I've got a meeting with the highway department to try to clarify.
Drag him along.
Yeah, well, what happened, cause I was with the county at the time, and what happened is, highway department came in and basically just pointed a finger, like, you guys put your water lines in our right of way, and now you gotta move them, and that's why, you know, highway 330 is county road's 330, you're...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that was a concern that just come up with me, and I didn't know how it was handled previously, so, I asked the question in the meeting, and they told me, Lloyd, which, which was, he said when it was drawn up, they had put the balls in there, so, I have not heard back from the highway department, an actual answer. Uh, and of course, we've got the, the ordinance on the, uh, on the tap, tap fees that we discussed earlier.
We'll do that, uh, go ahead and do that, ordinance on the tap, we moved it on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion, and you can explain it, I entertain a motion, second, put on the first, second, third reading by time long, the tap ordinance, it basically gives you a floating, you know, cost.
What this tap was, what we've done on that, instead of just saying one set price, the way that the, all parts and everything's fluctuating, is we did a cost plus material and maintenance, I mean, I mean, material and, and time, so, pretty much, each customer now is gonna get a high-minded bill when we do their tap, and it's gonna show every part we used, and then we're gonna base it off with a $2,000, $1,000 tap.
It's gonna be a break-even deal, huh?
It's gonna be a break-even deal, because the way that taps work before, I did some quick figures, we're, we're losing about $200 on material, I mean...
This keeps it at cost, and you don't have to come back every time.
And I don't have to come back and ask for a rate change every time, this is just a, this is a, whatever it cost us in my time, it's, it's no extra.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, second, put it on the first, second, third reading.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Uh, any other discussion on that?
Horns.
That's clerk Sarathia, want me to vote?
Horns.
Yes.
Rorland, yes, Pasing.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Bissel.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
An ordinance in the city of Clinton, Arkansas, to amend water tap increase to make technical corrections to Title 10, Chapter 10.08 of the Code of Ordinances, and to declare an emergency.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, second, to adopt the ordinance.
Make a motion?
Okay.
Motion, second, any discussion? Ask for roll call.
Horns.
Yes.
Rorland, yes, Pasing.[1792.92]
Hastings.
Yep.
Lynch.
Yes.
Piston.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Entertain a motion second to adopt the emergency clause.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? Ask for a roll call.
Barnes.
Yes.
Riley, yes. Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Piston.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Twenty nineteen dash oh two.
Okay, still in the water. You can give us an update on our, had a workshop all the time.
Yeah, we had a workshop and I think it went pretty good. We had just about all the council there. I know Galloway wasn't able to make it because you, the mayor, wasn't there. But we had several discussions. Clint come and give, he had a little program for us and stuff and explained, you know, the rates that he had done for us. And it, and kind of what it showed. And then he did a little deal on capital for some improvements in the community plan. So we actually had taken that information, we've run some numbers. We emailed it to the council, the three different options and stuff. There is a direction that I need to hand out and show some people or show you guys with the council. Some of those numbers in that rate one tier, well, all the way across the board, they're showing a little higher than what we wanted. And the reason is, is it was plugged in, an increase on the wholesale customers also. Wholesale customers, that forgot to be played with. We did a four dollar for the wholesale. That was just a number we pulled out. I do think that's going to be a little bit too high to go from right now, our two wholesale customers. We are charging them three dollars and thirty cents a thousand and three dollars and twenty-three cents a thousand for Bee Ranch and Van Ryn County. So that four dollars was a little bit too big of a jump. But that's why those numbers are showing higher than that. High, on the one that shows that we need to break even, it's showing higher than that. And that's because that was already plugged in at four dollars. That won't, even if we raise it, that won't take effect until after January. We have your contractor, the numbers will not change. But it was plugged in there. So I actually have a sheet here that shows it without that.
I'll get a copy of that.
We, I have a copy for it. I have ten copies here, so we have, we have that. As far as that goes, if there's any discussion that we want to have tonight, I'm available. But we had talked earlier about maybe having another, Clint said that he would be able to come and have another workshop if you do want to.
I talked to Mickey about that today and we want to just not get bogged down. But I definitely want to be there and have Clint back and whoever in there.
And we'll also have a, it was video. So we also, you know, if you, the ones that had missed it, had wanted a copy of that video, it's been offered up, we can get a copy of that video. I know I'll.
I'll get with you first of the week and decide the best time when everybody can meet, everybody in the same page. And then Clint, you want to add anything or?
I think we covered it well. I think the workshop went well and I'll just kind of.
You can.
My name is what it says is just bringing up a rate to get to break even.
Yeah.
And then add some capital and all of that, like Will said. It presented the three rates that we looked at. I'd be glad to, you know, come up with a kind of workshop. I will be out next week, so next week, go with the fourth would be the only time I could.
Well, we did first that week. Like I said, I was talking to Mickey if we had to, but if we had to go another week on our meeting or whatever, we'd do that. But I really want to get this on the July.
And I think before we pass any sur rate increase, you do have to have some type of public here.
Right.
Organize that before you actually went into your discussion and passing the rate.
I can start on that next week. Make sure, get our dates with everybody, what'll be best and get going on that.
Yeah. One thing about, I mean, one thing we noticed when we were playing with these rates is that pretty much the, if we, when we looked at how our downfall for last year, when, if we had, if we got any percentage of that tax money that we talked about, that if we actually got the full amount, that full amount was almost to the, to the number of our downfall. So just saying if we did get some of that, that rate increase is pretty much just going to be to cover capital. And, and that is actually in those, in those rates and that was passed out. So, I mean, you've got the break even one is with, is, would be the exact same as what we are now with that tax. And then we just have to cover capital. That capital what they're proposing is break even and five percent. So.
Yeah, it was laid out pretty well. I appreciate it. And the other thing is, I had Orin's wife and we were just blind side, everybody was. Orin, been here all these meetings, lost his wife in a car wreck and we're devastated. So he, get him or bed. I've called him and he's going to do some tough stuff. He's always been very helpful. Anything else out of the Water Department?
That's all I got?
Yes.
Is there any questions?
I, I just, I just want to say real quick, just a big thank you to people on the Water Commission. That's been really hitting this hard the last several months. And also our Water Department, our, our staff. And of course, with our engineers and stuff too, that come in and did the rate, the rate study. And I'm, I'm with you, Richard. I think, you know, some of them later is probably better, not the same sheet of paper. But we've done, we've done a lot in the last couple of years. I think the citizens have seen that and they know that we're serious about it. And so I, I look forward to the, to our meetings and stuff and getting, getting down to where we can make a, make a decision that's going to benefit, you know, not only our citizens in Clinton, but also, you know, our county and everything. But I'm really appreciative of all, of the, the hard work that T L P B has done. It's been a serious effort.
All right. I appreciate that comment. Yeah, the council's been very aggressive, so has the Water Department and C W B's been very helpful. So I appreciate all that. I'll start Monday on Friday, next day, for whatever, like you said, it has to be a public here.
Okay, when we get the, when we get the pole yard and it's all done, can we all just have a little meeting there and get one real snap of partners or something?
We'll have a celebration.
Celebration, do graffiti and all that, you know.
Who put the building over the line?
It was, hey, that's something we adopted. And I do got one more comment. That is something that I, that was just earlier, just over here. I was like, you know, we need to put that in on the zoning deal, you know. If there's, there's a water line there, we need to have some kind of policy in play.
Yeah.
You know, we, we think it's just common sense, but it gets done all the time.
Well, it falls into cracks like everything else. If you don't.
Because that's out of the city, out of the area that anybody checks.
Well, we've got something coming up in the city. You know, we've, I've got a phone call yesterday with my contractor. They're wanting to move in and build. We've got a main line there. They're wanting to get around without moving the line first. It's, so we've got the, this is a good example on why we don't need to let that happen.
Yeah. I could, I mean, I went up there this weekend and seen it and I don't see how the Highway Department allowed them to build the building that close anyway. But, you know, it's been there.
We are actually, we tried to stay as close to the building when we put that reroute around through there. We, and they actually had, the Highway Department had it staked out their area. And we actually stayed on private going around through there. We, but luckily, we were able to do that, so.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Brings us to zoning, anything else?
Not a lot of new stuff going on. Of course, the grass is growing, but really going to start looking at some abandoned buildings and going through that process, declaring the loosens, how we can get the proper leans on it, whether it's a property tax lien or a foreclosure, different kinds of. I think we'll have several properties. Kind of have had one that I've been worried about for quite some time, finally is being torn down and removed. So making some progress there. Would like to ask to have Sherry McCaslin reappointed. Her term's come up on the, I believe, on the zoning.
Sherry, Sherry McCaslin, four year term, motion second to redominate her for the zoning. More, I'll entertain a motion second for that.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion second, any other discussion or any other nominee? I'll ask for a roll call.
Barnes.
Yes.
Riley, yes. Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Piston.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
I think local business man's going to come to zoning meeting and.
No, we, we, our next zoning meeting is July the first, on Monday, instead of having it on July the fourth, regular.
You aren't good on the fourth?
I was all for it, but I believe I'm on that.
Uh, okay. Dispensary, I guess, is rolling along. I missed that.
It's up and. Seems to be going good. They actually sold out probably within a day or two, but I, of course, don't have any numbers or anything on, but.
How much, um, how much revenue are we going to get from the city for that?
But all week, yeah, it's just regular city.
It's just still city sales tax. I didn't know if there was any, any different, like, alcohol tax or anything.
No, the state has, of course, there's six and a half percent. I think they actually did a, added a four percent previous tax to it. But then that form will, on the agencies that it goes to, it's nothing separate. But I think we will, I understand we will supposedly get our one percent city tax and the county will get their two percent. It'll bring in some revenue.
I heard the first day was like twenty-four thousand.
Oh, it wasn't that at all, that's.
Yeah.
Crazy.
Yeah, it was pretty good.
Um.
He's just full of it, but.
Then on, I guess, A and P side, Peggy O's term comes up. Would like to reappoint her, only possibly to one year for a four year term, but I'm working for her for the next twelve months, try to.
Peggy O for another year, entertain a motion second to put her on A and P.
I'll make a motion, we put her on for another year.
I'll second it.
Second, any other discussion for nominee? Ask for a roll call.
Barnes.
Yes.
Riley, yes. Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Piston.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Other than that, we're kind of working towards the Park Fest with a Sat, last Saturday of the month as a designated get together event type thing. Get some word out on that, kind of. Hopefully see it develop and grow. Be a good thing for our area. Other than that, what's going on?
Okay. Uh, anything else?
Carla Folds with the library, a long time librarian, retired this afternoon. It was her last day, so if you haven't seen her out and about, thank her for three nine years of service to the library.
Carla Folds?
I have brought, brought this up before, but I don't know if there's anything that we can do. I would be glad to work together with you on this, is to clean up yards, especially on, on the highway, on sixty-five. Like abandoned cars. I've been noticing so many. And I have seen this thing on TV where you go and they pay for you, they'll, they'll pay you to come pick up your car. But I, I know there's some, some younger guys like in Grisberry that are going around getting scrap metal and they'll carry away your cars. They're going to get their college money for it. But I was like, if we could just clean it up. I mean, and I know there's probably some people that have abandoned cars that probably they can't, they're older, they probably just can't move them. I mean, you know, they don't know what to do with them. But I don't know if that would be a, a thing for the city to, you know, get some money for them or either just clean it up and say, we're going to come in, we're going to get a hauler, we're going to carry away your abandoned cars and then we could go sell it.
We went through that one time before.
We have done that before?
Yeah.
And how did that work?
Not good for the city. With the, the Nixon place.
Anything, with the city taking action, probably on cost three to four times more. But I think it would be good if we could source like what you're talking about. Because it would be great when you go to that old couple, say, look, you know, I won't have to get tough with you about this, but you're supposed to, you can't have abandoned vehicles.
I know some of my neighborhood that can't even, that there's grass growing around the cars. And I'm like, it is, it is, it's more than a nuisance. I mean, I think it's probably like a welfare check. Like somebody needs to go knock on the door and see if somebody's dead.
Somebody like that in the county.
Yes, there's some in the county, but there's a lot in the city. And I just think it's just, I, I keep harping on it, but it's like, I don't want people to come into Clinton and think that's what we are about because we're not about that. You know, it's like, we are clean people.
I may, I may address that in Mary's comments.
That's good, that's good.
Uh, and Jessica was not here, she said, I don't know if she had anything on economic development, you know, got chuck wagon races coming up, not too soon. She thinks about that. Business and the other thing is we're going to have a volunteer day, a lot of us started, I'll mention that. And what she was discussing, talk about that in Mary's comments.
Can I say any more, Mary, please?
What's that?
Fire Department. Can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
We've got two of the three fireworks stands are, okay, the third one is supposed to be checked. I'm going to check it at noon Friday. But it's going back over the ordinance. And it, just, just as a friendly reminder for the public, it's they, they are allowed to shoot fireworks three days before the fourth, three days after the fourth. That's it.
And the fourth is certain, huh?
Not past.
Just, just because they can go by them right now, they do not need to be shooting them three days before and three days after.
That question. And, and just like, you know, it's, there's a time that you get, they can't be shooting after.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock is the head off of the night.
Give ourselves a ticket then.
Is it ten, ten during the week, is it eleven on the weekend?
I'm sorry.
I thought it may have been like eleven o'clock. We extended it on the weekend, maybe.
It was ten during the week.
I think it's ten all the way around.
What's, what time in the morning?
I, I get up about nine thirty, so we can tell where.
Hey, Alex, I'll meet you over about six forty-five.
I was soon.
Can we look online and see? My dog runs away every year.
Yes, I actually can.
She always comes home.
So if you, if you, if you light a bottle rocket in the city, but it goes up and explodes over out in the county, does that matter?
You have to.
Yeah, that car, that car is drawing a little rock, that's going to get you here.
Okay. Anything else on zoning? Thank you. Brings us down to cap grant update. I talked to our fellow today, Jess Rippon. We're going to work on the right of ways. He got it turned in on the seventeenth, we're still on, on schedule. I've got a copy of that, what it's going to look like, y'all seen that. It'll be all on school property except maybe thirty feet. He suggested if, if the city gets the right of ways for the road and the property lines, put a package together with a legal description. It will save us a bundle of money and that's what we had planned to do the whole time. I'm going to see the new superintendent this weekend, we'll talk about that, among other things. But it's hallway engineering, they've done a good job. I looked at it, submitted to the state, I feel very comfortable about the direction of the sidewalks. Things are going to do a really good job. That's about all I have. We made our deadline on the set test and take one for now.
Yeah. Yeah, I passed one around everyone. Uh, this is the same deal from last year. This is the, the co-ed, old person softball.
There's old people.
There's some pretty young ones.
I am one of them.
Sorry, Alex.
So seasons kicked off, same deals last year. They'd like to, they'd like to use the lights, a little bit cooler at night. So want to use the lights, they're willing to pay. Uh, this is, same deal as last year, new five hundred dollars for the field rental.
I don't know when you want a question.
This is only until like the end of the tournament?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just attached the, I attached the schedule on the back. So those, basically those, it's just, it's just wanting to use the fields on those dates. Uh, the only thing that's different this year is they're wanting to hold their tournament at the end of the season on Saturday rather than doing it in the evenings. It was just, it got, when, when it got to the end of the year, school was starting up and it got to be a hassle to try to do it in the evenings. So I went to August, we got to do it on Saturday. So I'll have to check and make sure to get it back. What we're looking at was that August third.
I would suggest if they're, if they're available, book them.
Yeah, I needed to, yeah, I needed to look into that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so it'd be August third is what they'd be looking at on, on doing that.
I think that's a good thing. I think everybody enjoys it.
Yeah, I know the, I know that all the players do it. I mean, Archie Fest got fifteen teams and it's going to be a struggle to get them through the woodcut fireworks.
Yeah.
Uh, you just need a motion, motion second. Uh, you just need a motion, uh, motion second. I'll entertain a motion second to.
I'll make a motion second.
Phil, you screen. Any other discussion?
I'll add one more thing that was mentioned. I haven't talked to Earl about it, but, um, last year, uh, last year they agreed to kind of pick up the, like pull the trash. And the thinking there was that that dumpster would be there. I don't think that dumpster's there. And that could be a little problematic.
It saved me a lot of money and, I mean, we ended up pulling most of the trash anyway, so.
Yeah, well, just like.
As long as they'll keep picked up after themselves. As long as they keep it picked up in a tin can, that way we can just pull them and go. That's fine. But then we gotta go out there and clean the dugout and stuff.
Well, and Leanna Brown's the president of, of this.
So far, it's been.
Person, and she's been staying on people without making sure they're keeping it clean.
Yep, they've done good so far. I mean, they've chalked their own lines and everything. So we just, we'll do everything we can to keep it mowed and keep it drugged the best we can for.
Okay. Motion second, any other discussion? I'll ask for a roll call.
Barnes?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Piston?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Brings us down to public comments. Any public comments?
I'll just do this. I don't interrupt you on it.
What's that?
I won't interrupt you on the mayor's comments. Just, Dean and I were able to attend the municipal league training. And I said this at our water workshop too, but I just wanted to make sure I mentioned this tonight as well. There's gonna be a, potentially a, a move from, for the state legislature probably next session in twenty-one to really remove more local control decisions that are made from our cities and towns to the state. There were a couple of bills that got defended and stuff like that. This is, this is something that the outgoing president, the North Little Rock mayor told us. And if that's the case, you know, that's something that potentially it, it could affect every department in a city or a town. And they really want us to stay on top of things in the next couple of years to contact our state representative and our, our state senator, both of whom are, of course, pretty good guys, but they don't live in Van Buren County. And because of that, you know, you know what that means politically? Usually the squickie wheel gets the oil. So we need to make sure that we let them know through, in the, in the nicest way possible that they don't need to be a part of, of trying to remove a lot of decisions that local municipalities have. And, cause trust me, I work down there and there's no, when those hundred and thirty-five people get together, there, there's no telling where some of the mayor, mayor may not go. But it's also gonna affect, you know, our county, county government as well. They'll, they'll look at things that if they feel like they can take that away from, from, from the county and cities, that's, that's what we're gonna do. And, you know, people, you know, cities and stuff, we, and mayors and everything across and, you know, city council directors and things of that nature. I mean, we, who, who knows better what goes on in our city than us? Because we live here, we're a part of the community. Everybody sees us. Most everybody knows us. And, you know, we don't really need to have someone in Little Rock making a decision about Clinton, Arkansas. That's, you know, that, to me, that's why the citizens here elect us to do the jobs that we do. So I'm just, I'm just saying in the next couple of years, I'm, I'm pretty sure there'll be more updates and stuff happening that municipal league. Man, the guy that's gonna be president this year is Jonesboro mayor and he's a real firecracker. I'm telling you, he's sharp. Funny, but he's sharp. And, you know, we just need to make sure that, that we stay on top of this and do what we can. You know, I think, you know, we've got, we have a good representation in the legislature because, you know, they, they listen to us. But we just need to make sure they understand that they're gonna be, they're gonna be on the wrong side if they try to take away that local autonomy and that local control. Because that's not why.
Municipal league does a good job, but Mark Hayes is always saying, you need to call them yourself. It doesn't make a difference.
Yeah, and that's, that's really what Joe Smith said from, from his position that he made that presentation is that you've gotta get your city council people, emailing, phone calling, writing letters, get you, sometimes get your departments some things, let them know what's going on because they do listen to that. Those legislators, when they get that information, it, it, it can sway a vote very easily. Uh, just depending on how, how that legislature hears or that senator, state senator hears from.
But email's great. I hate email. I like to call, but the paper trail is a really good thing in that.
You like to call at about six thirty in the morning.
And a late evening.
Thank, thank you. That's, that's all, that was the major, the biggest major thing I got.
That's right. I had a question.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Brings us down to mayor's comments. Archie Fest coming up. Our street department's incredible. They do a great job and I mean it. Be sure and get out and look at some old cars and see folks and be seeing, uh, last Saturday we talked, that's one thing we was gonna talk about. Last Saturday in the park with no fees. We may talk about that in our July meeting. We get everybody out one day a month, knowing there's something going on over the park. Victory Mission, girl Jennifer Jones. I met her last year. They, on the thirteenth of July, Saturday at the, uh, it's down at that church in Austin on the left. If you're going to Center Ridge on the left, that church, it cuts through to, uh, try to attend this. I'm gonna circulate this. This is kind of a rehab and getting your life straight. And I just encountered her. She was with Evelyn Leeds and some really good people out of Bee Branch. And she's from up in the northeast. She has really done great things. And this is a very good program. I'm gonna give it to Alex and I mean it. But the thirteenth at one o'clock. Try to go to that if you can, for sure. Work session with water. I'll let you know. Flood plane, Steve Bone was here tonight. I'm gonna try to have an update at our next meeting. We're gonna try to go down first or second, maybe not next week, but the next. They're gonna have, anybody from Clinton interested? That's got a dog in the hunt, if any land or whatever, all the way from Steve Bone, Kenneth Kealan and Shane McDonald and anybody that has one in floodway, Clinton flood plane. We'll try to go down there as a group and look at that. And I'll try to have a report and maybe have one of them come up here at our next meeting. Volunteers Day, August the third and August the seventeenth. Land owner, Vaden Oaks, we're gonna meet at his house on August the third. And we're gonna focus on weed eating along sixty-five. We have permission to clean up from, we'll start at Walmart to the Archie Creek Bridge. Help landowners clean up their lot. This is all volunteer. If you wanna come to, we can work your car thing into that. Also have a downtown crew. That's, and I'll give you more of an update on that. But the date of thir, the third and the seventeenth of August, anybody with a weed eater or a lawn mower will provide you with an orange vest. We wanna clean up anything that's visible on Highway sixty-five, edging the sidewalk, whatever you can see. Uh, we're gonna have a big pot of beans. That was Jeff Piston's idea a long time ago. It's a good idea. Be like the best fisherman. We'll feed you and we'll work a good hard half a day, seven, eight hours, whatever, till you get tired. I'll give you an update on that. More to come. And you mentioned Carla. That's all I have. Uh, if you have anything for next month's agenda, see me. That's all I've got. I entertain a motion second to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?